Language is not permitted, demeaning, discriminatory, or harassing behavior and speech directed towards others is not permitted. Disruptive behavior, including disruptive or disrespectful conduct during others' presentations, is not permitted. Banners, flyers, or signage are not permitted. Backpacks, large bags, and sharp objects are not permitted. Clear bags, not tinted in color, that do not exceed twelve by twelve by six inches, will be permitted and are subject to search. Health food and beverages, including in metal canisters, are not permitted. Cell phones must be placed on silent prior to entering the meeting room. Individuals must remain seated. Public comment speakers are permitted to stand only when providing public comment. Small handheld devices may be used only while seated, and the user must refrain from interfering with or hearing of other individuals. Individuals or groups failing to adhere to these rules will be asked to cease such disruptive conduct.
Good morning, members of the City Council. The meeting will begin shortly. Please remember to log into your devices. Thank you.
The City of Chicago City Council Rules of Conduct for Public Meetings, 2023 to 2027 pursuant to the Chicago City Council Rules of Order and Procedure, Rule 49, the Sergeant at Arms sets forth the following rules of conduct to be followed during the public comment period and the duration of all committee and city council meetings, profane, vulgar, threatening. Cell phones must be placed on silent prior to entering the meeting room. Individuals must remain seated. Public comment speakers are permitted to stand only when providing public comment. Small handheld devices may be used only while seated, and the user must refrain from interfering with or hearing of other individuals. Individuals or groups failing to adhere to these rules will be asked to cease such disruptive ... and city council meetings, profane, vulgar, threatening, abusive, or disruptive language is not permitted. Demeaning, discriminatory, or harassing behavior and speech directed towards others is not permitted. Disruptive behavior, including disruptive or disrespectful conduct during others' presentations, is not permitted. Banners, flyers, or signage are not permitted. Backpacks, large bags, and sharp objects are not permitted. Clear bags, not tinted in color, that do not exceed twelve by twelve by six inches, will be permitted and are subject to search. Health food and beverages, including in metal canisters, are not permitted. Cell phones must be placed on silent prior to entering the meeting room. Individuals must remain seated. Public comment speakers are permitted to stand only when providing public comment. Small handheld devices may be used only while seated, and the user must refrain from interfering with or hearing of other individuals. Individuals or groups failing to adhere to these rules will be asked to cease such disruptive conduct and failure to comply will result in their being subject to removal from the meeting by the Sergeant-at-Arms. City of Chicago City Council Rules of Conduct for Public Meetings, 2023 to 2027 pursuant to the Chicago City Council Rules of Order and Procedure, Rule 49, the Sergeant-at-Arms sets forth the following rules of conduct to be followed during the public comment period and the duration of all committee and city council meetings, profane, vulgar, threatening, abusive, or disruptive language is not permitted. Demeaning, discriminatory, or harassing behavior and speech directed towards others is not permitted. Disruptive behavior, including disruptive or disrespectful conduct during others' presentations, is not permitted. Banners, flyers, or signage are not permitted. Backpacks, large bags, and sharp objects are not permitted. Clear bags, not tinted in color, that do not exceed twelve by twelve by six inches, will be permitted and are subject to search. Health food and beverages, including in metal canisters, are not permitted. Cell phones must be placed on silent prior to entering the meeting room. Individuals must remain seated. Public comment speakers are permitted to stand only when providing public comment. Small handheld devices may be used only while seated, and the user must refrain from interfering with or hearing of other individuals. Individuals or groups failing to adhere to these rules will be asked to cease such disruptive conduct and failure to comply will result in their being subject to removal from the meeting by the Sergeant-at-Arms.
Good morning, members of the City Council. Please remember to log into your devices. The meeting will begin shortly. Thank you. Good morning, members of the City Council. Please remember to log into your devices. The meeting will begin shortly. Thank you.
City of Chicago City Council Rules of Conduct for Public Meetings, 2023 to 2027 pursuant to the Chicago City Council Rules of Order and Procedure, Rule 49, the Sergeant-at-Arms sets forth the following rules of conduct to be followed during the public comment period and the duration of all committee and city council meetings, profane, vulgar, threatening, abusive, or disruptive language is not permitted. Demeaning, discriminatory, or harassing behavior and speech directed towards others is not permitted. Disruptive behavior, including disruptive or disrespectful conduct during others' presentations, is not permitted. Banners, flyers, or signage are not permitted. Backpacks, large bags, and sharp objects are not permitted. Clear bags, not tinted in color, that do not exceed twelve by twelve by six inches, will be permitted and are subject to search. Health food and beverages, including in metal canisters, are not permitted. Cell phones must be placed on silent prior to entering the meeting room. Individuals must remain seated. Public comment speakers are permitted to stand only when providing public comment. Large bags and sharp Bags, not tinted in color, that do not exceed twelve by Individuals or groups failing to adhere to these rules will be asked to cease such disruptive conduct and failure to comply will result in their being subject to removal from the meeting by the Sergeant-at-Arms.
Good morning, City Council. Good morning. If you can please log into your devices. Please log into your devices. We will get started in a moment. Please raise your hand if you need support. Please raise your hand if you need support. Log into your devices. We'll get started in a moment.
Chicago City Council Rules ... of conduct for public meetings, 2023 to 2027 pursuant to the Chicago City Council Rules of Order and Procedure, Rule 49, the Sergeant-at-Arms sets forth the following rules of conduct to be followed during the public comment period and the duration of all committee and city council meetings, profane, vulgar, threatening, abusive, or disruptive language is not permitted. Demeaning, discriminatory, or harassing behavior and speech directed towards others is not permitted. Disruptive behavior, including disruptive or disrespectful conduct during others' presentations, is not permitted. Banners, flyers, or signage are not permitted. Backpacks, large bags, and sharp objects are not permitted. Clear bags, not tinted in color, that do not exceed twelve by twelve by six inches, will be permitted and are subject to search. Health food and beverages, including in metal canisters, are not permitted. Cell phones must be placed on silent prior to entering the meeting room. Individuals must remain seated. Public comment speakers are permitted to stand only when providing public comment. Small handheld devices may be used only while seated, and the user must refrain from interfering with or hearing of other individuals. Individuals or groups failing to adhere to these rules will be asked to cease such disruptive conduct and failure to comply will result in their being subject to removal from the meeting by the Sergeant-at-Arms.
You know what? I just realized something.
City of Chicago City Council Rules of Conduct for Public Meetings, 2023 to 2027 pursuant to the Chicago City Council Rules of Order and Procedure, Rule 49, the Sergeant-at-Arms sets forth the following rules of conduct to be followed during the public comment period and the duration of all committee and city council meetings, profane, vulgar, threatening, abusive, or disruptive language is not permitted. Demeaning, discriminatory, or harassing behavior and speech directed towards others is not permitted. Disruptive behavior, including disruptive or disrespectful conduct during others' presentations, is not permitted. Banners, flyers, or signage are not permitted. Backpacks, large bags, and sharp objects are not permitted. Clear bags, not tinted in color, that do not exceed twelve by twelve by six inches, will be permitted and are subject to search. Health food and beverages, including in metal canisters, are not permitted. Cell phones must be placed on silent prior to entering the meeting room. Individuals must remain seated. Public comment speakers are permitted to stand only when providing public comment. Small handheld devices may be used only while seated, and the user must refrain from interfering with or hearing of other individuals. Individuals or groups failing to adhere to these rules will be asked to cease such disruptive conduct and failure to comply will result in their being subject to removal from the meeting by the Sergeant-at-Arms.
Good morning, Council. We're back to electronic voting. Please use your e-device and cast your vote. The voting is now open. Please log into your device and use your e-voting. If you need support, please raise your hand. The voting is now open. I'm sorry, the quorum is now open. I will now take a voice vote for those who did not use the e-device. Alderman Laspada. Oh, Laspada is present. And happy birthday. Alderman Robinson. Not present in chambers. Alderman Hall. Not present in chambers. Alderman Mitchell. Mitchell is present. Alderman Beal. Beal is present. Alderwoman Gutierrez. Not present in chambers. Alderman Curtis. Curtis is present. Alderman O'Shea. O'Shea is present. Alderwoman Taylor. Not present in chambers. Alderwoman Tabara.
So we do have a quorum. There are a number of members that have requested to participate in today's meeting remotely for reasons stated in rule fifty-nine and they are as following. Alder Coleman, Haddon, Taylor, Clay, Irvin, Talia Faro. Madam Clerk, could you confirm their existence remotely?
Yes. Um.
Madam Clerk, could you confirm their existence, please, remotely?
Sure. Alderwoman Coleman.
Present.
Coleman is present. Alderwoman Taylor.
Here.
Taylor is present. Alderman Irvin.
Yeah, Alderman Irvin is present.
Irvin is present. Alderman Talafaro.
Present.
Talafaro is present. Alderwoman Clay.
Present.
Clay is present. Alderwoman Haddon.
Present.
Haddon is present.
Very well, thank you, Madam Clerk. All of the individuals that wish to participate in today's meeting remotely for reasons stated in rule fifty-nine have been confirmed. There's a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, would you please take the quorum, please take the roll call vote for the members who wish to participate remotely per rule fifty-nine.
All right, the quorum roll call vote, or roll call vote is now open. It is now open. Please use your e-device. The roll call now is open. Alderman Mitchell, Mitchell is a yes. Alderwoman Harris, Harris is a yes. Alderman Beal, Beal is a no. Alderman Curtis, Curtis is a no. Alderman O'Shea, O'Shea is a no. Alderwoman Nugent, Nugent is a no. Alderman Knutson, Knutson is a no. Alderwoman Clay, oh, Clay is not in chambers. Clay is absent and Alderwoman Nugent is a no. The voting is now closed.
Very well, there are twenty-one yeas, seven, eighteen nays. The majority of the members present have accepted remote participation per rule fifty-nine for the following members: Coleman, Haddon, Taylor, Clay, Irvin, and Talia Faro. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's remain standing for our invocation today, which will be delivered by Reverend Dr. Eddie Williams III.
Might we pray? Our Father, we are grateful for this day, a day that you have made and we shall rejoice and be glad in it. We pause to thank you for all of the things that we normally take for granted, our health, our strength, the roof over our head, clothes on our back and shoes on our feet. We appreciate you and we are grateful to you, all that we are and ever hope to be. We give you all the glory for it. We pray for our city. We pray for unity. We pray for love, God, a sense of cooperation, oh Lord, and we also pray for this city council. Help us to remember the words in the Psalm, that word, "Salah," which means to pause and it means to reflect. As we deliberate today and do the work and business of the city, help us to pause and reflect upon why we do what we do, that we are servants, first of all. And I pray, Lord, that you would also grant us the understanding and pause to remember the words of Jesus, that blessed are those who take care of the poor and the needy, those that look after those that are the least of these. We pray that we are mindful as we pause and remember them as well in our deliberation. Lord, let there be peace, let there be understanding, and let there be solutions so that all parties may be blessed. This is our prayer, in Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you. You may be seated. It's the portion of the meeting for public comments, Mr. Clerk.
The council will now begin the public comment period, which is limited to a maximum of thirty minutes. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Speakers cannot yield or transfer their time to another speaker. Any written comments that have been submitted will be posted and made available for automatic review. The first speaker today is Fuqua.
Fuqua is not present on Zoom.
Our next speaker is Jody Widiker.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Good morning. Yes, we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Dear Mayor Johnson and Chicago City Council, thank you for your time and listening to me today. Again, I am here to advocate for the humane measure to ban the sale of new fur in Chicago. For some, this may not seem very important, but this is not just about protecting animals. Our world and our environment are in a very precarious place right now, and this directly affects each and every one of us in the way we live our lives. Avian influenza is disrupting the agriculture, agricultural industry, as you have probably seen with the increases in the soaring prices of eggs. The primary reason for high egg prices is the current bird flu outbreak, which has killed millions of chickens on egg farms, drastically reducing egg production. From the Centers for Disease Control, H5 bird flu is widespread in wild birds worldwide and is causing outbreaks in poultry and U.S. dairy cows, with several recent human cases in U.S. dairy and poultry workers. Fur farming is another industry that forces animals into unnatural, unsanitary situations that cause these crises. From the National Institutes of Health, June 2024, highly pathogenic avian influenza, HPAI, has caused widespread mortality in both wild and domestic birds in Europe. In 2023, in July 2023, HPAIA, H5N1, was detected on twenty-seven fur farms in Finland. In total, infections in silver and blue foxes, American minks, and raccoon dogs were confirmed. As you hear, all of this is connected. So to conclude, this common sense legislation is so much more than animal welfare. On behalf of the Chicago Alliance for Animals, more than three thousand members and millions of people worldwide, I am urging you to please vote in support of O2023-2983, to protect each other, our city, the environment, and for those without a voice or choice. Let's be part of the solution, not the problem. Thank you again.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you.
Our next speaker this morning is Jesse Johnson. Our next speaker this morning is Mario.
Good morning.
My name is Jesse Johnson. I just came here to show my support for the mayor because, um, there's been so much talk about what's going on and the things that he's not doing, and I feel like he's doing a lot for the community, and I feel like a lot of people are standing in his way, that he can't get anything done because so many people are standing in his way because they don't want him to be successful. And I'm here to show my support, and I hope that the people will stop standing in his way so he can get some things done. Where was the, where was the people when Rahm Emanuel was in here? Why didn't nobody stand up to him? Where were the people when Mayor Daley who ripped this city apart? Why didn't they stand up to him? But everybody wants to stand up to him and tell him what he's not doing right and what he's not doing properly, and, and these people rip this city off. That's why it's in the shape that it's in. But now you want to blame him for everything. I think it needs to stop and I think it's sinful what you're doing to this mayor, and I think it needs to stop right now because you didn't stand up all this courage, all this courage coming from all these people. Where was it when Emanuel was here? Where was it when Daley was here? It was nowhere to be found. So I think you need to give him a chance and let him do his job.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker is Mario Phillips.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I don't have a lot to say, but I, Doge, they recently reported an estimate of sixty-five billion dollars in savings, and I know you go to Capitol Hill next month. If they would propose to you, we'd give you twenty billion dollars to rescind the sanctuary city status, would you rescind it? Because twenty billion dollars can be used a lot. It could be used even in a municipal bankruptcy, like Mike Duggan did in Detroit in his first term. So it's not about how long you've been, it's about the usage of it. Because in twenty, in twenty-ten, we was about fourteen billion dollars in debt in the pensions, now we up to thirty-three, that's almost a three-hundred percent gain. And I don't understand the important, people don't understand how important it is to become solvent, because if we beat default on the loan, the whole city falls. So that's how you restructure the debt, by actually dealing with it, because it takes, it takes a strong will to make a right decision, and that's what you're gonna need to do with that. Also, one percent of the city is a, one percent of the population works for the city, us in the private sector, we shouldn't be subsidizing these pensions. We in, we in defined contribution plans, you all in defined benefit. That means I can't retire when I want to retire if the market fall, but you could retire whenever you at will, and you won't even feel the effect of that. That's not right to us. So some of that money, also, if they was to give it to you, you could lobby so they could change pension laws at the state level, so that could free us up. And another thing, what we could probably do with that money, if they did propose that to you, what, only like one or two percent of the schools have like HVAC, uh, welding, or even electrician? It don't make sense for a kid to go to school for thirteen years and not graduate with an income-earning skill. Why all the schools don't have dual enrollment? Why all the schools don't have more trades in them? It's a hundred fifty-seven schools and that's only one percent, two percent of them that could do that. So if they put that deal on the table, because you could see he's an administration that's willing and dealing and wouldn't negotiate, would you say, I'll take, give me twenty billion dollars, I'll take this off the table so we can help the city flourish? Because if we default, we already was in junk status in twenty fifteen, and some of the, some of the aldermen were here, and that's why we probably got our credit score lowered last month, because some of them here, you can't put new wine in old wine skin. You can't do that, it's ruined the whole wine skin. So now you want to borrow another thir, a hun, eight-hundred-thirty million dollar and they just lowered our credit rating last month? That's not making sense. So if we gonna kick the can down, it's gonna be a bigger issue later on down the road.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you.
Our next speaker this morning is Jesse Johnson. Our next speaker this morning is Mario.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Jesse Johnson. I just came here to show my support for the mayor because, um, there's been so much talk about what's going on and the things that he's not doing, and I feel like he's doing a lot for the community, and I feel like a lot of people are standing in his way, that he can't get anything done because so many people are standing in his way because they don't want him to be successful. And I'm here to show my support, and I hope that the people will stop standing in his way so he can get some things done. Where was the, where was the people when Rahm Emanuel was in here? Why didn't nobody stand up to him? Where were the people when Mayor Daley who ripped this city apart? Why didn't they stand up to him? But everybody wants to stand up to him and tell him what he's not doing right and what he's not doing properly, and, and these people rip this city off. That's why it's in the shape that it's in. But now you want to blame him for everything. I think it needs to stop, and I think it's sinful what you're doing to this mayor, and I think it needs to stop right now because you didn't stand up all this courage, all this courage coming from all these people. Where was it when Emanuel was here? Where was it when Daley was here? It was nowhere to be found. So I think you need to give him a chance and let him do his job.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker is Mario Phillips.
Good morning. Good morning. I don't have a lot to say, but I, Doge, they recently reported an estimate of sixty-five billion dollars in savings, and I know you go to Capitol Hill next month. If they would propose to you, we'd give you twenty billion dollars to rescind the sanctuary city status, would you rescind it? Because twenty billion dollars can be used a lot. It could be used even in a municipal bankruptcy, like Mike Duggan did in Detroit in his first term. So it's not about how long you've been, it's about the usage of it. Because in twenty, in twenty-ten, we was about fourteen billion dollars in debt in the pensions, now we up to thirty-three, that's almost a three-hundred percent gain. And I don't understand the important, people don't understand how important it is to become solvent, because if we beat default on the loan, the whole city falls. So that's how you restructure the debt, by actually dealing with it, because it takes, it takes a strong will to make a right decision, and that's what you're gonna need to do with that. Also, one percent of the city is a, one percent of the population works for the city, us in the private sector, we shouldn't be subsidizing these pensions. We in, we in defined contribution plans, you all in defined benefit. That means I can't retire when I want to retire if the market fall, but you could retire whenever you at will, and you won't even feel the effect of that. That's not right to us. So some of that money, also, if they was to give it to you, you could lobby so they could change pension laws at the state level, so that could free us up. And another thing, what we could probably do with that money, if they did propose that to you, what, only like one or two percent of the schools have like HVAC, uh, welding, or even electrician? It don't make sense for a kid to go to school for thirteen years and not graduate with an income-earning skill. Why all the schools don't have dual enrollment? Why all the schools don't have more trades in them? It's a hundred fifty-seven schools and that's only one percent, two percent of them that could do that. So if they put that deal on the table, because you could see he's an administration that's willing and dealing and wouldn't negotiate, would you say, I'll take, give me twenty billion dollars, I'll take this off the table so we can help the city flourish? Because if we default, we already was in junk status in twenty-fifteen, and some of the, some of the aldermen were here, and that's why we probably got our credit score lowered last month, because some of them here, you can't put new wine in old wine skin. You can't do that, it's ruined the whole wine skin. So now you want to borrow another thir, a hun, eight-hundred-thirty million dollar and they just lowered our credit rating last month? That's not making sense. So if we gonna kick the can down, it's gonna be a bigger issue later on down the road.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker this morning is George Blakemore.
Brendan Johnson, Mayor Brendan Johnson, do not go up to Congress talking about sanctuary. You support the sanctuary. They will trick you. It's about the money. You have used some federal money for sanctuary. Now, I've been around for eighty-three years. Now, I've seen many mayors, but now you have a rating of, of six percent. So I'm urging you to, to, don't let them trap you in sanctuary. If anyone needs sanctuary, black people need it. This is Black History Month, our history. We are entitled to sanctuary for all the goods, service, contracts, and jobs. Mr. Blakemore, what makes the black man so unique? He's the only man in America who was enslaved in America, enslaved in America. So you are a unique man, so you must embrace your uniqueness. Now, everyone here, ninety-nine percent of the people here, these aldermen, are Democrats, Democrats, and now you go into another circle with Republicans, with, with, with Reverend Trump. She is the head of the domestic relations, her alone with a bunch of cronies and also criminal judges. I've emailed to the committee about, well, some of the committee about. But these are people that's supposed to take care of you. But you, on the other hand, oh man, I was so happy to hear that you going to Capitol Hill. I was so happy to hear that because here, now you get to feel what it feels like to have somebody with absolute almost authority standing on you. And how feet out your, your fight might look, but now we get to see. But it'd be no binding you out, the 830 million we say no to. That way you get to wrestle from your vantage point, just like the rest of us out here. Because we gotta deal with it, we gotta figure it out. So you and your think tank, y'all can figure it out. And the American people can kind of sit there soon now. That structure, infrastructure, no infrastructure is coming to Austin, nor Inglewood, nor South Shore. None of it's coming those ways. We got urban up here, what? It's called identity politicking. Look at those poor black, but yeah, we divested, not poor. Because we always gonna figure it out. We've been figuring it out for centuries now. But here it is, you want to keep using that identity crap, talking about education. We got no education. Black kids are the least. Y'all talk about diversity, equity included, none. Oh man, none of us, it don't include us. Not our kids, not their future, no consideration. But y'all still arguing because you want to still get the money. And like he said, you might not make it off the hill. And I've been thinking that. With a certainty, you might not make it. They got, look, you think Vass Squares, you think C. Tro, you think any of them going up there with you? I guarantee you can, you can offer them a free ticket. They gonna duck that one quick. And when Pam Bundy get down here for your corporate law office, the ones that's, look, purposely denied me my constitutional right. I can't wait to see them wrestle with somebody that look. So hey, hey, I'm here. Y'all kick me out, but watch, you might not make it off the hill, Mr. Johnson. You might not make it off the hill. So y'all can subject me to whatever, but hey.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you.
Our next speaker this morning is Osiris King.
Hello, Mr. Mayor Brandon Johnson. As we close out Black History Month, let's talk about some real blacks' history. A. Philip Randolph was a black labor activist who opposed immigration. Booker T. Washington and Frederick Douglass were prominent black people in America who opposed immigration because they saw what immigration does to the black community. So this charade that you're doing with Donald Trump and Tom Homan, we see through it, it is a farce. Black people have always been against immigration, legal and illegal. Because a lot of poor black people are at the low wage labor market and we don't need foreigners taking our jobs and competing with us. So being pro, fighting against illegal immigration is the most black thing you can do. It is the pro-blackest thing you can do is fighting illegal immigration. Don't let them tell you otherwise. Mayor Brandon Johnson, I am so happy that you are testifying before Congress because the people of Chicago, especially on the south and west side, do not support sanctuary cities. I know the election is over and people are trying to distract you with lunatics protesting against deportations. And Democrats doing what Democrats do. But do not forget that we in Chicago do not support sanctuary cities, especially the people who live on the south and west side, who had our schools turned into migrant shelters. And for all the people who are mad about Trump getting rid of DEI and critical race theory, those things were racist. You cannot fight past discrimination with future discrimination. If Martin Luther King saw what the Democratic Party has become, he would roll over in his grave. We want to know where that money went. 400 million to illegal aliens. People talk about, oh, reparations this, and reparations that. And you have Democrats talking about all this stuff, they need to talk about where that money went. Because that's where their money went. It's complete insanity. And might I say this, a lot of people say Donald Trump is anti-black. Donald Trump has acknowledged that birthright citizenship was meant for black people, for newly freed black slaves. That's black history. Democrats want to give it to immigrants. Donald Trump has said that illegals compete with black people for jobs. Democrats look the other way. Donald Trump has said that criminal illegal aliens should be deported out of poor black communities while Democrats like Mayor Brandon Johnson and others fight tooth and nail to keep them here. They are not for black people. They are not. So y'all can call me a sellout for being black and a Trump supporter, that's fine. But y'all token DEI Democrats are a threat to democracy. Y'all are the crazy ones. So please tell me to all the people who call me a sellout for voting for Trump, which one of us is really selling out, brother?
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker this morning is Daniel Beland.
Good morning, City Council and Mayor. I know many people are here today to express their frustration with how the city is being run and how our tax dollars are being spent. But I'm here to say thank you. As the Executive Director of the Committee for Chicago Mayor Recall, I want to thank you for demonstrating exactly why a mayoral recall mechanism should be law in Chicago. From day one, your values have not reflected those of everyday Chicagoans. Instead, they align with CTU puppet masters and radical activists who sow distrust and division. A mayor should unite the city and prioritize public safety. You have done the opposite. Your administration includes an anti-Semitic, anti-law enforcement, external affairs officer, a chief of staff who believes in peace circles will solve sexual harassment, and a senior advisor who allegedly committed election fraud in Texas and lacks a legitimate Chicago residence. Your leadership is failing and the results speak for themselves. You say you don't do raggedy, but your leadership has been exactly that. Chicagoans, regardless of race, income, or religion, want to feel safe in their homes, on their streets, and in their schools. Yet under your watch, armed juvenile thugs continue to carjack, loot, and rob. You canceled ShotSpotter without a backup plan, endangering 2/3 of the city's population. Since that time, 34 people have died. That blood's on your hands and on the Vasquez 19 Progressive Caucus who supported you on that. You also failed to disclose your conflict of interest in CPS contract talks benefiting from a deal while replacing the school board with unvetted CTU loyalists. Firing CEO Martinez days before Christmas for refusing a reckless payday loan proves your priorities lie in union politics, not student success. The only ones benefiting from a better, safer, stronger Chicago are criminals and special interests. A recent poll shows you're at a dismal 6.6 approval rating, with support collapsing across all racial and ethnic groups. Given this overwhelming rejection and the loss of the confidence of the Chicago people, I'm demanding your immediate resignation. Your administration is incompetent, Chicago deserves better, and Little Dirk deserves his money back. He needs it for commissary. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker is Andrew C. V. Nelson-Bay.
I'm Andrew Clarence Merrill Nelson. I am a candidate for Governor of Illinois in 2026. And the Chicago municipal election should be held in November 2026, the day of the midterm general election. And its subsequent runoff is to be held in March 2027, first Monday, which is Pulaski Day, Chicago holiday, and held that way from now on. I am Commissioner of U.S. Public Health Service to be, well, I have yet to be confirmed by the Senate. I suspect our Senate confirmation hearings will be held concurrent with your being in Washington, D.C. shortly, I surmise. I may run for mayor of Chicago. If the people want me to run for mayor, if you want Andrew Nelson for mayor of Chicago, you got him. I'll put it that way. My mentor is Harold Washington protege Bill Doc Walz, himself a candidate for mayor in 2007, 2011, 2015, and briefly in 2019. I ran briefly in 2023. I, the will of the people is eternal law of the land, according to former Illinois Governor Pat Quinn. And he's right. So if you want Andrew Nelson for mayor of Chicago, you do indeed have him. And I shall be replacing outgoing Chicago Mayor Brandon Johnson. I can serve as governor for two years and run for vice president with J.D. Vance. In 2030, I shall be running for President of Cook County Board, replacing outgoing Tony Preckuswell. And I am very adept at Chicago politics. I was born in Michael Reese Hospital. Raise the dragon banner o'er us. Raise our ancient loyal chorus. Fame behind us, fame before us. Harvard, St. George. Now you went to Elgin School, that's where you were born in Elgin, you're not native of Chicago.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker is John Cantazera.
Good morning, Mayor Henyard.
Good morning.
Oh, wrong city, but it will be the same end result. Someone already talked about the 6.5% approval rating. I want to remind you, you were elected by half roughly, 52% of 600,000 Chicagoans. That's about 12% of the population. You are literally at 6.5%. Donald Trump could run for mayor of Chicago right now and beat you. That's how unpopular you are and ridiculous this city has become. Before I talk about your esteemed Sergeant-at-Arms and his illegal policies for public speaking, I want to talk about this bond vote you're all gonna take. $800 million with a $2 billion end price tag. Ridiculous. Why? So the King grifter over there can give his girl Stacy Gates, who has been to his house several times to backdoor negotiate contract proposals, can get her pound of flesh out of the city taxpayers. Well, the reality is, you talked about other labor leaders being on a leave of absence while they serve as president, and you're no different as the mayor. Are you really that clueless? Are your fifth graders you used to teach really that much brighter than you? You're the mayor, you're negotiating on behalf of this city. You are not representing the membership, but you are because you're still technically a member of CTU while you're negotiating a contract for the taxpayers of this city. Where is the Inspector General? Where are the rest of you holding them accountable for this? He should be forced to fully resign from CTU while these negotiations are going on. It is a direct conflict of interest. But you're all sitting on your hands and your asses doing nothing. I'm just telling you, for those of you who think you're going to vote yes for this ridiculous bond issue, just know, we have a giant PAC fund that will continue to grow at FOP 7, and you will all be on the target list. We will recruit candidates, and we will not be, take maybe all of you out, but we're certainly going to target anybody that votes yes for this. And you're going to say, what has this got to do with the police? We are taxpayers, and many of us are the primary taxpayers in this city. So my members are sick of getting a decent contract and then having it stolen out of their back pocket in the same sentence. It will end, or your political careers will, I can assure you of that. And you're going to follow suit with him and Tiffany Henyard and be in the forgotten pile of politic history. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Your Honor, there are no further speakers who have time to sign up for the public commentary.
Thank you very much, resolutions. We have one acknowledgement today. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Dow.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the City Council. You know, when, in this body, can you please turn on the mic?
There we go.
Thank you. In this body, we typically honor the champions for football, baseball, swimming, volleyball. But today, we have an opportunity to honor a champion in the field of wrestling. And that is David McCarthy, who is a senior at De La Salle Institute in the 3rd Ward. But he is a resident of the 15th Ward, who won the state championship of IHSA Class A in boys wrestling. He's here today with his coach, Jason Davidson, his head wrestling coach at De La Salle, his sister Ayana, and his father, David McCarthy, Senior. And I would ask him to rise if we could give him... I, I also want to say that David is an A and B student. And Alderman Chico, he swole like you.
All right. Well, congratulations. Thank you, Chairwoman Dow, for bringing that acknowledgement to this body. Next up, communications. I'm sorry, the Chair recognizes Alder-Helo Gutierrez.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to be recognized for attendance.
Madam Clerk, please add Alderwoman Gutierrez to the quorum roll call, please. Chair recognizes Alderman Hall.
The roll too as well.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, please add Alderman Hall to the quorum roll call. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Tabarez.
I just want to be recognized for the purposes of...
Very well. Madam Clerk, please add Alderwoman Tabarez to the, to the quorum roll call. And there are no communications for today. We do have one committee report, I believe, the Committee on Rules. The Chair recognizes Chairwoman Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. Reporting for your committee on Committees and Rules, was met on Tuesday, February 25, 2025, at 10:00 a.m. The committee recommends the passage of the following items. Items 1 through 3 are corrections of the City Council Journal of Proceedings for September 18, 2024, February 21, 2024, and December 13 of 2023. Items 1, 2, and 3 receive due pass recommendations, Mr. President. If no one wishes to speak, I move to pass these items by a roll call vote.
Very well, thank you very much. The items have been presented before us. There's a motion on the floor to approve these items by a roll call vote. Thank you, Madam Clerk. If you can prepare the technology and orders, please use your E-vote application to record your vote at this time.
The voting is now open, the voting is now open. Please use your E-device, the voting is now open. I will now call those who have not used the E-device for a voice vote. Alderman Hopkins, Nat President Chambers, Alderwoman Coleman.
Yes.
Coleman is a yes. Coleman is a yes. Alderwoman Taylor.
Yes.
Taylor is a yes. Alderman Burnett. Burnett is a yes. Alderman Irvin.
Yeah, Alderman Irvin pulls yes.
Irvin is a yes. Alderman Talafaro.
Yes.
Oh, Alderman Talafaro is a yes. Alderman Ramirez Rosa. Ramirez Rosa is a yes. Alderman Knutson is a yes. Alderwoman Haddon.
Yes.
Haddon is a yes. Have all those voted who wished? The vote is now closed.
There are forty-eight yays and zero nays. This matter is passed. Alderman Mitchell, on a motion to reconsider.
To reconsider the vote.
All those in favor of the reconsideration of this vote signify by saying aye. Any opposed, say no. This motion fails. The chair recognizes Chairwoman Harris.
The committee recommends that Item four through six be re-referred to the Committee on Finance. Item four is an ordinance concerning the issuance of the Department of Housing Assistance and other financial assistance to UNAH Irving Park LP for acquisition and construction of a seven-story building at 2909-2917 West Irving Park Road. Item five is an ordinance concerning the bond and bond issuance for Chicago O'Hare International Airport Senior Special Facilities Revenue Bond, TRIPS Obligation Group Series 2025 for the benefit of the borrower. Aerial Chicago Two, secured by the Senior Master Indenture Promissory Note Number 2025-2 of Members of Obligation Group for Financing or Refinancing Air Cargo Facilities, Related Facilities, Debt Service, and Bond Cost Issuance. And Item six is an amendment of the Municipal Code, Section 2-45040, to remove requirements of economic disclosure statements in connection with the right-of-entry agreements, release, releases of liability, or other similar agreements. The committee recommended that these items be re-refere, re-referred to the Committee on Finance. If there's no objection, I move approval and recommendation by the first most favorable roll call vote previously applied to Item one through three from the Committee on Committees and Rules Committee Report and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
The committee recommended that Item seven be re-referred to the Committee on Health and Human Relations. Item seven is amendment of Municipal Code, Chapter 8-16, by adding new Section 8-16064 regarding cannabinoid hemp products offenses involving, involving minors. I move approval of the recommendation that Item seven be re-referred to the Committee on Health and Human Relations by the same roll call, if there's no objection.
Hearing none, so ordered.
The committee recommends that Item eight be re-referred, that Item eight be re-referred to a joint committee on finance and Committee on Real Estate and Housing. Item eight is an amendment of Municipal Code, Chapter 2-44, by adding new Section 2-44160 establishing for nonprofit residence investment corporations to address housing needs by financing, acquiring, owner, and operational permanent affordability, mixed income, and environmental sustainable housing. I move approval of the recommendation that Item eight be re-referred to the Joint Committee on the Committee of Finance and the Committee on the Housing and Real Estate by the same motion, if there's no objection.
Hearing none, so ordered.
The committee recommends that Item nine be re-referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Item nine is amendment of Municipal Code 4-4331 to prohibit sale of cannabinoid hemp products and within the Pullman Roseland area. I move approval of the recommendation that Item nine be re-referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection by the same roll call, if there's no objection.
Hearing none, so ordered.
The committee recommends that Item ten be referred to a joint committee on, of the Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety and the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Item ten is an amendment of the Municipal Code, Title II and X, to direct the Commissioner of Transportation to implement Plow, the Sidewalk Pilot Program, and to extend the end date of the program working group to December 31, 2026. I move approval of the recommendation that Item ten be re-referred to the Joint Committee on, of the Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety and the Committee on Transportation and Public Way by the same motion, if there's no objection.
Hearing none, so ordered.
Item eleven is a resolution amendment for the membership of the Committee on Ethics and Government Oversight for the years 2023 to 2027 by removing Alderperson Scott as a member. I, I move approval of this recommendation by the same motion, if there's no objection.
Hearing none, so ordered.
That concludes my report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Is there anything on an agreed-upon calendar, Chairwoman Harris?
Yes. Oh, we move fast today. I received from Clerk Anna M. Valencia a total of twelve items, proposed of agreed calendar consisting of congratulatory commemorative tribulatory resolutions from the following Alderpersons. Alderperson Hopkins, Alderperson Hall, Alderperson Rodriguez, Alderperson Tabarez, Alderperson Ramirez Rosa, Alderperson Metz, Alderperson Spisado, and Alderperson Lawson. I move these in a omnibus, please.
Very well. Hearing no objections, so ordered. Thank you, Madam Chair. For new business, the clerk will call the wards, beginning with the 50th.
Zoning amendments, which are referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Traffic regulations, traffic control signals, and traffic signs, which are referred to the Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety. Exemption from physical barrier requirements for commercial driveway alley access for parking facilities, which are referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderperson Manaha Happenworth has proposed ordinance for a supportive Class IX tax incentive for the property at 4920 North Sheridan Road, which is referred to the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Alderperson Manaha Happenworth also has proposed ordinance for an honorary street designation as Bob Newhart Way, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderperson Knutson has a proposed ordinance for amendment of Sections 2.2, 2.18, and 2.19 of the 2025 Bond Ordinance Regarding Amortization Schedule, which is referred to the Committee on Finance. Alderman Viejas has proposed resolution to call on all city departments and sister agencies to explore alternative social media communication platforms, which is referred to the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. Alderperson Ramirez Rosa has a proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code, Section 4-60-022, to allow additional alcoholic liquor licenses on portion of North Elston Avenue, which is referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderperson Conway has a proposed ordinance for amendment of the annual appropriation ordinance to transfer funds within the 34th Ward Wage Allowance Account for the year 2025, which is referred to the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Alderperson Conway also has proposed ordinance for the issuance of bonds for public infrastructure, community development, and neighborhood improvements through City's Aldermatic Menu Program, which is referred to the Committee on Finance. Alderperson Conway also has proposed ordinance for the issuance of bonds for capital improvement plan projects, which is referred to the Committee on Finance. Alderperson Wackespack has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at various locations, which are referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderperson Burnett has proposed order for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at 3218 West Chicago Avenue, which is referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards, and the issuance of permits for signed signboards at 3218 West Chicago Avenue, which is referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderperson Tabarez has proposed order for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at 6035 South Pulaski Avenue, which is referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderperson Lee has proposed order for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at 234 West 31st Street, which is referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderperson Hopkins has proposed ordinance for an honorary street designation as Honorary Mary Ellen Christie Way, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderperson Hopkins has proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code, Title IV, by modifying Section 4-156-150 to exclude lawful, lawfully maintained and operated video game terminals from automatic amusement device definition, which is referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderperson Laspada has proposed ordinance for amendment of the annual appropriation ordinance to transfer funds within the Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety for the year 2025, which is referred to the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Alderperson Quinn has proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code, Chapter 2-8, by adding a new Section 2-8-036 entitled Issuance of Bonds and Other Indebtedness Ordinance Requirements, which is referred to the Committee on Finance. Alderperson Riley has two proposed ordinance for signed signboards at various locations, which are referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderperson Robinson has proposed resolution to call on the City Council to formally apologize for black citizens for historical injustices, which is referred to the Committee on Health and Human Relations. Your Honor, that concludes the presentation of Aldermatic introductions.
Very well. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Next up, we have unfinished business. Chair recognizes Alderman Mitchell.
Mr. President, I am aware of one piece of unfinished business. It was filed by Alderman Dow, and I defer to her.
Very well. Thank you, Alderman Mitchell. Chair recognizes Chairwoman Dow.
Thank you, Mr. President. I filed a Rule 41 Notice with the clerk of my intent to call for a vote on SO 2025-0014841, which is a substitute ordinance authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds to finance improvements to public rights of way, infrastructure, and transportation, loans and grants, acquisition of property, construction and maintenance of public buildings, economic programs, and lead service line replacements. Before I move passage of this item, I first move to substitute this ordinance with the version that all members should have received and would like to make three changes from the previous substitute ordinance. Number one, in the recital on the first page describing how bond proceeds can be spent, the reference to loans and grants was revised to limit these to capital projects and to shorten the list of potential recipients. Also, a cross-reference to requirements and limitations on loans and grants was added in Section 2.19C. In Section 2.18L, a list of potential types of recipients was replaced with parties for clarity. Number three, in Section 2.19C, a new language provides that each grant or loan shall be only made for a capital project located within the city at the written direction of the alderman representing that ward in which the capital project is located, and the total of loans and grants shall not exceed $75 million. I move to accept the substitute ordinance as amended by a voice vote.
Very well. All those in favor of accepting this substitute ordinance signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? In the opinion of the chair, the ayes have it. The chair recognizes Chairwoman Dow.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move passage of this item by a roll call vote.
Very well. There's a motion to accept this substitute by... Chair recognizes Alderman Martin.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to be recognized for purposes of roll call.
Very well. Madam Clerk, please add Alderman Martin a part of the quorum roll call. This is the... Could you clarify, Madam Chair, the roll call vote, the substitute that you're calling for?
Yes. I'm, I'm calling for a, a roll, of, um, of, excuse me, I'm calling for a roll call vote on the substitute ordinance as amended.
Very well. So there's a motion on the floor for a roll call vote for the substitute ordinance as amended. Madam Clerk, thank you for preparing the technology. Alders, please use your e-vote application to record your vote at this time.
The voting is now open. The voting is now open. Please use your e-vote device. The voting is now open.
Mr. President, are we going to have any debate on this?
This is the substitute.
The, the, the call for the substitute as amended to be voted on per roll call is on the floor before us. We're taking that vote.
No debate?
That's, 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 the, the, the body, of course, always has an opportunity to debate, but the motion has been made, the call for the vote has been operated.
The majority of the body was thinking that we're going to accept the substitute and then the actual ordinance. We did, exactly. So therefore, our rolls and was ignored, and we went straight to the vote. So I would like to have discussion on the, on the, on the ordinance.
That no, no one was ignored. The, we made the motion to accept it for a roll call. We did that. The question was called. The roll call is in front of us. We're taking the vote at this time.
Mr. President, if we're not on an $830 million bond, that is a travesty to the people of the city of Chicago. We're just asking for a few minutes to step back and allow us to talk about this bond.
I, I understand your desire, Alderman Beal, but again, per parliamentary procedure, the chairwoman asked for a roll call vote on the substitute as amended, and we begin to proceed with the roll call vote.
And I stood up and was not acknowledged.
There, there was no standing, and there was no, not, no acknowledging.
Oh, yes, it was. I stood.
Vote is in front of us at this time. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Mr. President, if you're going to take this vote on $830 million without, with the faith, that is a travesty to the people of the city of Chicago. You are the shaking of the jaws to try to move forward with violence. Look, the, this is out of order, Alderman Beal.
The vote is in front of us. The e-vote application is available. The vote is in front of us. The e-vote application is available. You can cast your vote at this time. So, thank you very much. So I've spoken to the Chair of the Committee, and as a matter of a courtesy, as a matter of a courtesy, I'm going to recognize the Chair, as a courtesy, who wishes to withdraw her motion. The Chair recognizes Chairwoman Dow.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move, as a courtesy, to take back my motion.
For the purpose of...
In order to enable debate on this matter.
All right, very well. Thank you very much. We'll accept that.
We'll renew time motion later.
Very well. We expect that... We accept that courtesy. Okay.
Since... So I just wanted to be clear that we're stopping the vote, and we will reopen once the debate is done.
Very well. recognizes Alderwoman Fuentes. My apologies. The Chair recognizes Chairwoman Dow.
Mr. President, I would like to...
Yes, the Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before the Chair proceeds, I believe we need to make a motion to temporarily suspend Rule 19 for the purposes of undoing that vote that was started, which is the taking and entering of votes, before we proceed.
Thank you, Alderman Lopez. We'll review that rule right now.
Well, there's a... So then I would make the motion to temporarily suspend... For the temporary suspension of the rules for the purposes of waiving Rule 19 for negating the previously called roll call on this motion.
So the way it was prescribed was that the roll call vote was improperly initiated because there were individuals that wished to speak to the item. And so in this instance, I do not believe that the characterization of Rule 19 in this instance applies. Very well, thank you for that point of order. The Chair recognizes Chairwoman Dow.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask that we could suspend the motion.
No, there's no need. There's no need. Please, you can speak to the item.
Yeah, I already made the motion. I already previously made the motion that... To allow debate.
That's right. Do you wish to speak to this item, Chairwoman?
I would like to close.
Very well, then the Chair recognizes Alderman Burnett.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Wow. I haven't seen this in a long time, man, since I was looking at TV when I was younger. But anyway, so this is a quality of life issue. Paved streets, safe sidewalks, clean water, and quality of life issues for everyday Chicagoans. These are some of the basic things that people in our community send us down here to take care of. Some of our communities can't wait. Matter of fact, some of our communities have been waiting for a long time, some more than others. Maybe some aldermen have the luxury of putting off infrastructure maintenance, but our community needs these investments now. So, you know, I have a unique ward. I have some central area which is flush with developments and a lot of things going on. Matter of fact, the city don't even have to do most of the work. Some of the new developments do some of the infrastructure work themselves, put up lights, new sidewalks, even repair the streets. But then I have a community out west where most of my menu money go to, and I've been working on those areas for many years trying to catch up and fix up to be consistent with everything else that's going on in the downtown area. Some folks, some of us that have downtown as part of our wards, we get infrastructure done without even using our menu. It gets done automatically because of the wear and tear that happens in those areas by tourists and all of the traffic that come in the central area. And so, you know, we may walk out in our downtown area and see a whole street being done that we didn't even ask to be done because it's in a downtown area, and those things get wear and tear. Fairness to current taxpayers. We are aggressively paying off our past debt over the next decade, 39 percent. Chicagoans need infrastructure maintenance, but they shouldn't be asked to pay for past infrastructure and future infrastructure. It would not be fair to current taxpayers to front load the repayment as some have called for. Alternatives will add 80 million per year. Alternatives put forward by other aldermen will add at least 80 million next year. That would need to be paid for with higher taxes on Chicagoans. We need the infrastructure, but we do not need to pay for it all upfront and unfairly burden current taxpayers. Deferred maintenance will cost more. Putting off these investments will only cause more in the long term. Potholes will grow bigger. Vacant buildings will catch on fire. Light poles will fall, and bridges could deteriorate beyond repair. It is much more fiscally responsible to address the problem now instead of waiting for someone else to fix it later. We cannot kick the can down the road on infrastructure. This would cost us more. Supplemental points. Uncertain federal funding. Who knows what's going to happen in Washington, D.C.? Who knows if we're going to get any money from Washington, D.C.? A matter of fact, right now, Washington, D.C. is threatening to take money from us right now. We need to... We need to become self-sufficient. I think this is very wise and very smart and very beneficial to make sure that we can self-sustain ourselves for the future for the infrastructure that we need. I remember when I first became alderman in the West Loop, and over in 1996, when we were getting ready to have the Democratic Convention, I was vengeful to say that the West Loop is the way it is now because we spent millions of dollars on infrastructure work, millions of dollars putting up planters and fixing sidewalks and new lights and all of those things, and it gave the impression to everybody else that this is a happening area, and folks started to invest money. Infrastructure has an adverse effect on our community. If folks come in your neighborhood, they see broken sidewalks or no sidewalks. I know some of us, I have... I still have some streets that don't have any sidewalks, right? And I know on the West Side with those, what is it called, WPA streets? Some folks still have those streets on the South Side where they don't have no sidewalks. And the money we get for our menu is only a certain amount that we cannot pay for all of it at once. It takes years to catch up on it. Having this bond to help us to be able to deal with those things and give South Side and West Side aldermen in particular, who have areas that are lacking investment because of how it looks, is very beneficial to us to have this money to be able to deal with some of those things. In this bond, there's a list, a myriad of things that's going to different wards that are in need. For me, even with my menu money, I don't spend it on the East End because I don't need to spend it on the East End. I'm blessed to have Tills on the East End. I'm blessed to have Development on the East End. But on the West End, on the West End where folks, you know, I get so complacent with this stuff that you have to do it without even folks asking for it because you know it's needed, and you have to take advantage of the situation when you have the opportunity to be able to do it. And like I said, when you get these investments, it has a positive effect on your community. It has a positive effect on the culture of the neighborhood. Folks would rather stand around and do all types of things on broken, crumbling sidewalks in their neighborhood. But if it's a decent area and it looks good, people tend to have a lot more respect for that neighborhood. Long-term projects. A bond is a common way that cities and government bodies fund long-term projects. It is common to pay off bonds over the duration of the projects that they are used for. These projects will last decades, so it is common to pay them off over that time. Fair share. We benefit from past investments in our infrastructure, so it is right that we are still paying them off. Future residents would benefit from these investments, so it is right that they should be paid... They should pay their fair share as well. Clarifying the language, the substitute that Chair Dow is presenting today clarifies some of the language and language around loans to schools, but we cannot afford to put off any of the actual infrastructure projects. Public safety and quality of life. Repairing bridges, filling potholes, maintenance on fire departments and fire station and police department buildings, fixing sidewalks, streetlights, and traffic signals as well as lead service line replacement, these are public safety and quality of life projects that will directly benefit Chicagoans. I don't know if everyone saw the editorial in the Sun-Times today that our Transportation Commissioner, our Water Commissioner, our Fleet Management Commissioner wrote, of course, they take all of the stuff that's beneficial to the city, they put it way in the back. Thank you for putting it in the paper, but they put it way in the back after they put the objections up first, then they put the guys who's saying why we need this way in the back, so folks may not have found it. But if you ask the Commissioner of Transportation, the Commissioner of Water, the Commissioner of Fleet Management, why and how they use these... This money that would be coming to their departments, they would let you know, and in that article is expressed that they've been doing this for years. This hasn't just begun. This isn't the first time. It happened under Daley. It happened under Ron. It happened under Laurie. And I never saw the shenanigans that's going on right now when those things were being voted on several years in my time in being here in City Council. I don't understand why everything we try to do the way it has been done over the years is such a big deal. The numbers, 99 million for bridge work, 157.5 million in street upgrades, 168 million in upgrades, city facilities, fleet and equipment, 100 million for lead service line replacements, 19 million for sidewalk improvements, 63 million for streetlights, 102 million in street resourcing, 15 million to improve traffic signals. All this is very important to people in the City of Chicago in our neighborhoods. Matter of fact, we all been talking about this lead pipe removal for some time and replacement for some time now. Who knows what's going to happen with that money now coming from the federal government? We have to do something to make sure our people have clean water, that our kids aren't affected by lead pipes. I mean, this is a health issue in the City of Chicago, and if we cannot depend on the federal government, we have to do something ourselves. We are a city government. This is our city. These are our people. These are our constituents, and we need to do something to make sure that we take care of them, and we need not to be playing games. This is not the time for us to play politics. This is the time for us to position ourselves so we become self-sufficient so that if anything come our way, that we are able to still sustain ourselves and take care of our people in our community. Critical projects. This is no extra to cut these projects. Our disinvested communities cannot afford to put off critical infrastructure repairs and maintenance for the city. This is not about the mayor. This is about West Humboldt Park, East Garfield Park, West Garfield Park. This is about Inglewood, Humboldt Park, Auburn Gresham, Roseland. This bond is about the City of Chicago. We need to invest in our city because it will... If we neglect to, we will end up paying for it in the long run. Now, I've heard a lot of questions. I looked at the press conference yesterday. Our chief financial officer was on WTTW last night. Every question they threw at her, she answered. For one, they say, does infrastructure add 2 billion in borrowing costs over there... Over other structures? No. The illustration... There's an illustration that I have here that illustrates borrowing structure shown to aldermen. All the aldermen should have got this, have principles of 830 million, interest of 1.2 billion, and a total principal and interest of 2 billion. A structure cannot be adding 2 billion in costs where there is less than 2 billion in interest. This was a conservative scenario without the type of structure that would occur when the bonds are sold to optimize the bonds for the market conditions. How many times have we been here and we have restructured our loans? How many times have we restructured a loan where interest rates have gone down? How many times have we done that? With this bond, we will have time to restructure it in the future. I pray that interest rates go down and things change, and we are able to change it. I can continue to talk, but I'm going to let other folks talk, but I think I made my point. I can answer a whole bunch of more questions that were asked in reference to this bond, but I'm going to tell you, this is not the time to play politics. I know a lot of folks want to run for mayor, been running for mayor for the past two years. This is not about running for mayor. This is about the people of the City of Chicago. This is not about running for mayor, this is about the people of the city of Chicago. Folks don't care about all this shenanigans that goes on down here. The only thing people care about is what you can do for them in their community. They care about their streets being paved, their lights being fixed, their alleys being done, their sewers being repaired, you know, that's what they care about. They don't care about all this garbage down here, they are worried about the election, when election time come, which is two years away. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chairwoman Harris wished to still speak. So I have Chairwoman Harris, I have Alderman Beal as the next two.
Um, thank you, Mr. President. I'm voting on this bond. I've been here eighteen years, and with the exception when we did bonds, uh, more, I think when, under Lori, where we put three years of bonding together, I voted on the bond bill every year of my career. And I voted on the bond because I believe in the, that as a city, we have to do stuff to keep our infrastructure going. There is no way that a city this size cannot have a bond, hey guys, cannot have a bond and not be able to do and provide our infrastructure improvements to our community. And on a, on, on a real sense, I got a real selfish method in it, it's called the Eighth Ward. I want to make sure that the residents of my community get something from the city of Chicago. I can't, I have hundreds of requests for street resurfacing, for sidewalks and curbs, for anything that's in that menu, my residents have asked me for it. We keep a detailed file and we try to put the request in on the menu based on when the requests come into our office. The thought of me having to go back to my community and saying, we are not going to approve a bond to do any of that work that's sorely needed in the Eighth Ward community, because now I'm being real selfish about it. This is about me going home and being able to go back to my ward that I care about and that I love and say, hey, this is what we did as a body, this is what we give back to the community, that one-point-five million in our menu dollars that go towards taking care of our community. I would love for us to sit down and have a dialogue about what, how we pay for it. And I think that that's a question, but what I would not like to do is throw the baby out with the bathwater. And say, we're just gonna throw our bond out, we're gonna go back, start all over from the beginning, uh, we will never get our construction work bid out for twenty-twenty-five, we will be into twenty-twenty-six, uh, figuring out what the menu's going to look like, what a, a new bond is going to look like. So I'm asking us to take a look at, let's approve the bond, let's go back and sit up, sit down and talk about the financing of the bond, which is something that can be done. We can talk about moving that portion of the bond, how we fund it, and the structure of the payment schedules, those are kind of things that can be changed. And so I'm asking everybody to think of their communities as we sit around and say that we're not going to do an infrastructure program this year, or maybe not until we, uh, everybody decides to figure it out on how we're going to be able to deliver infrastructure, uh, to our community. Again, this is, I'm being super selfish. I want to be able to go back to my community and say, this is what we're, I'm delivering to my community, uh, infrastructure package. So I'm asking everybody to, uh, support me in my fact that I want to be a little selfish, that I'm concerned about what happens in the boundaries of the Eighth Ward. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Beal.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, first of all, nobody has ever said, we don't want an infrastructure bond. Nobody's ever said that. But what we want is a bond that is responsible and feasible for the people of the city of Chicago. The fact that we are not paying on this bond for two years until after the next election poses a problem. The fact that we're not paying on principal for twenty years and having a huge balloon payment is a problem. So, I don't know about you all, but I'm concerned about my kids having to foot this bill and my grandkids having to foot this bill. That's what the problem is. The problem is the size of this infrastructure bond. Now, let me just digress just a little bit, because I heard the same argument from the past administration about invest Southwest. We gonna invest everything on the South and West Side of Chicago, we're gonna transform the South and the West Side of Chicago. All the resources are going to the South and West Side. How's that working for you? How's that working for you? How is all the infrastructure work that you all voted for on that last bond, how's it working for you? Now, I'm gonna tell you, we're all entitled to one-point-five million dollars to spread out. But when we are selling our vote for a couple of extra streets is a problem. It's a problem. Now, this is about being physically responsible with the taxpayer's money every single day. Mr. President, let me just say, when we have all the bond rating agencies, all the financial experts, all the financial people telling us, this is a bad deal, and for us to sit here and ignore that, again, is another problem. Now, we're supposed to listen to and get the correct information from the administration, the CFO, the Budget Director, things like that. Well, those are the same people that told us, we will not get downgraded if the budget passes, right? Right. Well, we got downgraded. And they're also telling us and warning us that if this bond passes, we could potentially be downgraded again, and you all want to ignore that. Come on, y'all. And let me just say, the devil is always in the details. Now, we may have changed some language in the, in the amendment, I get that, but let me just say this. We have something that's coming March thirtieth, which is an imbalanced budget, because we need that hundred-and-seventy-five million from CPS or we have an imbalanced budget. Now, most of you all are not gonna follow the internal workings of what happens in the Budget Office. They can move money around, they can do different things, and you all would never know the That's why we have to be watchdogs of the people's money of here in the city of Chicago. Now, if CPS doesn't give us that money, then what's gonna happen? We, we were promised that that money was coming to us. We were promised from the CFO, right? Right. Well, we don't have that money yet. And if we don't have that money by the end of next month, we're gonna be faced with another problem here in the city of Chicago, just like the problem we had last year when we had an imbalanced budget and we had to come in and do an amendment. And I warned you all about it then, I'm warning you about it right now, that we are headed toward a cliff. A cliff. Now, yes, we've made some bad decisions in the past, and if you're not willing to admit we made bad decisions in the past, shame on you. But let me just tell you this, when you know better, you do better. And I happen to know better today than I did twenty-five years ago. Why? Because then we relied on the information that was given to us, being new to politics, you make bad decisions based on the information that you are given. Well, now, we're not making those bad decisions anymore. We're being more physically responsible with the people of the city of Chicago and the taxpayers as we move forward. So, ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna hear a bunch of talking points that were given out about all the wonderful things that are happening, all the wonderful work that's gonna be taking place. You all, if, we borrow seventy-seven million dollars a year just for our menu, right? We don't have the resources to complete our menu. How much menu money is carried over year after year after year? And that's with seventy-seven million dollars worth of infrastructure. So how are we going to complete eight-hundred-and-thirty million dollars in a year? Now, I mean, we can go on and on, but let me just say, this is physically irresponsible. The people are asking us to do better, the people of Chicago are paying attention, they're not, you know, you can say people ain't paying attention of what's going on down here anymore, you better not say that, because people are paying attention, and if you don't know it, check your mailboxes. Check your mailboxes and see if people are not paying attention in educating your constituents about what we're doing here on a day, day-to-day basis. So, again, Mr. President, this is a bad deal, I say we reduce it, we change the terms, and I guarantee you, if you change the terms and reduce it, you'll get a lot more votes and you'll get a lot more people to buy into it. I'm one of them. Change the terms, change the amount to get more people on this bond to get this work done. And I'm not gonna be sit here and I'm not gonna be afraid that I'm not gonna get, my people gonna get, because I fight for my people, okay? So, don't be afraid when they tell you they're gonna pull your projects, don't be afraid that they're gonna maneuver some money, that you ain't gonna get what's, what you're entitled to. By law, you are entitled to get all goods and service. George, say it again.
All goods and services. Oh, oh!
So, all right, I take it from here, George. So, Mr. President, I just encourage everybody in this body to understand that we're all for infrastructure, we're all for improvements, but we're just not for bad policies moving forward, and I encourage everybody to vote no. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. So we have Alderman Conway, Laspada, and then, um, Alderwoman Dow, Chairwoman Dow for the close, unless there's anyone else. So the Chair recognizes Alderman Conway.
Well, I, I, I'm gonna say what Alderman Beal said probably just less eloquently, but probably also a little shorter, so I want to thank him for his, his remarks. Yes, he was very eloquent, and, so Will Rogers once, once wisely said, if you find yourself in a hole, the first thing you do is you stop digging. Now, there's no doubt about it, our predecessors have left us in a, a deep financial hole. And the question is, how will we respond? Now, what we can all agree on is the need for important infrastructure spending, and no one disputes that many of these investments are essential. However, we have to be honest about the backloaded nature of this bond structure. And I use the term backloaded because you may have seen that the, uh, what the Council, the Council Office of Financial Analysis sent us last night, used the term backloaded. Now, some, I think, have questioned my motivation for bringing the repayment schedule to light a couple of weeks ago, but COFA calls them like they see them, and they have seen what I and every independent analyst has seen, which is this. There are no payments on the mayor's bond proposal at all until twenty-twenty-seven, accruing interest along the way. After that, the taxpayers face annual payments of forty-seven million dollars for seventeen years, then seventy-five million annually from twenty-forty-four to twenty-forty-nine, and then finally, a staggering hundred-and-thirty-seven million dollars per year each year for the six years inclusive of twenty-fifty to twenty-fifty-five. And as acknowledged by everyone, this totals more than two billion dollars, placing an enormous financial burden primarily on future generations. More than eight-hundred-and-twenty million of debt service will be paid on this between the years of twenty-fifty and twenty-fifty-five. Now, my wife and I are, are raising a two-year-old, a four-year-old, and a five-year-old, and I know many of you have young children as well. They will be in their thirties and on the hook for an irresponsible decision, I cannot stomach making for them today. When my five-year-old is thirty, we will be paying eight-hundred-and-twenty million dollars over a period of six years on this very bond. They won't be able to spend that money on safety, they won't be able to spend that money on schools, but on debt that we voted on today. So that's the future. Now, last week Chairman Irvin reflected on the past and asked, as many have, where was everyone when the parking meter deal came up? It's a great question. Many of us, nearly all of us weren't elected yet, but I suspect most of us, if we could, would go back and vote no, knowing what we know today. Two who did stand up at that moment, Scott Wagispack and Tony Preckwinkle, had the courage to vote no despite significant pressure. They both knew then, what we all do now, that short-term benefits aren't worth decades of financial harm. And just like the parking meter deal traded away decades of future revenue, this bond delays principal repayment, meaning paying down the actual debt for two decades. The argument that this structure, quote, "fits within our existing debt structure," only works if we won't continue to issue general obligation debt to fund capital projects. And we all know that's unrealistic. Chicago will always have capital improvement needs. Some have also suggested that we should simply defer to the CFO's expertise, and I will tell you, I deeply respect the CFO of this city. But if we're here relying on expert opinions, we have to acknowledge that every editorial board in this city has strongly come out against this bond deal. They have cited dozens of independent municipal finance experts, all warning against this path. It is time to stop digging, draw a clear line, ensure we secure a financially sustainable future for Chicago. Now, here's the good news. We have alternatives. We don't have to choose between strengthening, investing in our communities, and fiscal sanity. We have the ability and the responsibility to do both of those. Now, yesterday, I, I sent you all via email, two very responsible bond proposals. One for a hundred-and-eight million that specifically allo- is allocated to Aldermanic menu projects, and another targeted, transparent, four-hundred-million-dollar bond for capital improvements that has a level payment structure, just like a standard mortgage that working families all over this city have. We can discuss those specific amounts in committee, but these amounts and that structure would save the taxpayers, especially of the next generation, over a billion dollars of future debt service. Something I did want to, uh, correct in regarding the Vice Mayor's, uh, remarks, even if you did a level payment standard mortgage for eight-hundred-and-thirty million dollars at a five percent or five-and-a-half percent rate, you would have level payments of between fifty-four million and fifty-seven million dollars per year. So wherever eighty million come out, you can get that out of your mind, that is, that is incorrect. So, now, I also want to tell you something else I put in that mechanism that I sent out yesterday, in case you didn't had a chance to see it. I put in something there that tracks participation of minority-owned and women-owned businesses, which was in, by the way, the previous housing bond measure approved last year, but it is not in the authorization that you're voting on today. Now, I chose not to file those authorizations as a substitute today because Bond Council should review and sign off on, on a portion of this, in fact, the indenture portion they have to. So, I will merely close with this. I know it takes courage to vote no today, but once we unearth the repayment schedule, many of you recognize that the mayor's plan here is flawed. So why are we acting like this is somehow our only option? Your vote is a no on this plan, not on any plan. Simply put, we can fund important projects and invest in Chicago, but we don't have to mortgage our children's future and saddle them with reckless debt to do it. If we're committing two billion dollars over thirty years, we can certainly take three more weeks to craft a responsible proposal that meets our city's needs without compromising its potential. Supporting, I can't emphasize this enough, supporting the mayor's bond deal today almost certainly makes it harder to invest in public safety, schools, transit, in the years ahead. And we've seen what happens when leaders make short-sighted financial decisions. And that's why the argument of, this is the way we've always done it, is a terrible argument, because that's how we got in this mess today. So let's not make this same mistake, so please vote no today, so we can consider a fiscally responsible way to fund these necessary infrastructure projects. Thank you, Mr. President.
We have final three speakers here, unless anyone else. I have, um, Alderwoman Lee, and then Alderman Lopez, and then Chairwoman Dow. Chair recognizes Alderwoman Lee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I wasn't so sure I was gonna stand and jump in the debate today. Like my colleagues, I, I believe we need infrastructure, we have plenty of needs in the eleventh ward, and we all get the same phone calls from our constituents, a pothole there, a street that needs to be repaired. I still have WPA streets in my ward as well. I still have WPA streets in my ward as well. And I've participated in a lot of conversations about this bond deal. I appreciate the amendment that was made and accepted as a substitute today. That was something that I had requested to ensure that we had some guardrails around the dollars that could be spent on these organizations or schools, not wanting my colleagues who want to spend these dollars from their menu funds to be able to do that, but also making sure that for the rest of us, there were some assurances that there were, in fact, guardrails around some of these dollars. I also asked for another look at the dollar amount as a whole. I know that there's endless need in this city. I also know that through the conversations that I've had, that there's still about $1 billion worth of unauthorized bond money, or unauthorized bonds from previous years. So, I don't believe that we're going to need $830 for this year. And I realize that the way that we've done debt service in this city for a long time has gotten us to where we are now, and I don't know that we've seen a day like we've seen today in recent history in this city. So, I think it warrants additional conversation. I voted for the re-referral to finance last week. I was hoping to have a little bit more time. I'm not talking about a month, I am thinking a week or two, to try to get more of us to a place where we'd be comfortable supporting something, because I do think that we all support infrastructure. I don't think there's one person in here that doesn't. But I think we have to, I think we all have to keep each other honest in this conversation, too. We can't make payments on this bond because we haven't authorized it yet. Typically is done earlier, and we would have authorized debt service payments, and we can't do this until this next budget. And ladies and gentlemen, we're going to be back here in six months, talking about another bond for another year. So, I think we should take the time to get it straight now, or at least get us in that direction. That's why I cannot support this ordinance as it's written today. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Good afternoon, Mr. President and members of the City Council. I rise in opposition to this $830 million authorization, not because I don't believe in everything my colleague said, and to be fair, I do believe it is true. Our communities cannot wait, as our colleague stated. Many areas are lacking investment, but we often hear, and we even heard it last week, the illusion of some nefarious reason why. The white, the elephant in the room, I think was the term. The problem that we have here in this room is that we lack institutional memory, partly because so many are new, partly because some choose to have selective amnesia, but even as we look at what has happened just from the last administration to now. Mr. President, we have substitute ordinance O-2019-9398, $850 million in general obligation bonds for borrowing to kickstart a five-year capital investment plan, plan to deal with roads, bridges, equipment, infrastructure, lead pipes, walkways, crosswalks, everything that we're hearing about today. It was a two-in-a-five-year spending plan, at that time touted as "Chicago Works" by then-mayor Lori Lightfoot. The following year after that, this document, O-2020-5749, $2.35 billion in debt for infrastructure, the infrastructure that cannot wait. 2021, O-2021-4788, $660 million in more debt for infrastructure, for everything that I just vocalized. It was such a good plan, it even got made into a book. A book that is 200 pages and by far shows every address, every location, every ward, every street, every WPA. Following that, in 2022, O-2022-3593, for another $1.85 billion, billion, for infrastructure, for, as you guessed it, infrastructure for the five-year plan and everything that we're talking about needing money for today. That book came out a little thinner, but it lists everything in both a two-year and a five-year trajectory, everything that we're talking about, even including new environmental things that we're talking about. Nearly $5 billion in infrastructure we have borrowed over the last five years alone. If your ward doesn't have it, take a look in the mirror. If you don't recall, the last administration saying, "This is what we're going to do," as our colleague reminded us, we are $5 billion in the hole just based on what we borrowed, not what we're paying it off on, but on what we borrowed to do all of what we're being told that we need money to do today. And incidentally, folks, that also included funding for your menus through 2027. Why are you borrowing money for which you already have the authorization to borrow? We're not even talking about what the payments are going to be, what the debt service is going to be on all of this. We're looking at what is being presented to us today, which is needing allegedly another $830 million for what we've already borrowed $5 billion, so that we can in turn pay back this $830 million to the cost of $2 billion in 30 years. Which, by the way, that $830 million is only for one year's worth of money, because we're going to have to do the same thing again next year, because last year we borrowed $640 million. And when people say, "Why didn't you ask this when Daley was around?" I could answer you that, ma'am. I was in high school. I was in high school. Why didn't you say it when Rahm was here? I did, actually, because I also had to walk into this job and take the highest property tax increase to pay for everything that was paid for through debt for 30 years. Why didn't we do it with Lori Lightfoot? Every one of those, three out of those four debt proposals, I voted against, because if you could not articulate how you were going to pay for it equitably, how are you going to distribute it equitably, how are you going to ensure that it wasn't politics as it is now, as we see with the cast of characters behind me, who are restricting projects and wards throughout everyone who is not in full support, we have a problem. And yes, it can't just be, "This is how it's done," because "How it's done" has got us $29 billion in the hole, $29 billion just on general obligation bonds. We couldn't tax our way out of that. We couldn't grow our way out of that. We're on the verge of practically being insolvent, because I think between debt and pension, nearly 43%, if I'm not mistaken, of all of our revenue goes towards things that are in those two categories. We cannot, cannot be forced to make these kind of decisions where everything is to be determined, where everything is, "We'll get back to you," where it's, "We'll let you know," and hopefully, what we tell you this year won't disappear next year. This isn't about race, this isn't about racism, it's about that green color of money, the money that we're taking from every neighborhood's pockets, not just in this generation, but for the next two generations in the city of Chicago. Because next year, there will be an ask for another bond to cover infrastructure. Next year after that, because every year for the next 30 years, while you're still paying off this $830 million, we're going to need more money to borrow, to borrow, to borrow, and to borrow. We have a spending problem here in the city of Chicago. And even while we're talking about how we're going to spend for infrastructure, we could have gladly had a conversation last week when my colleague tried to send this back, and some of the same people who said no then are saying, "Let's talk now." Every time we try to have a conversation, whether it's about the language, whether it's about the terms, whether it's about how much money those nicely-suited people are going to make off of our billions of dollars that we're borrowing, it's dodge, deflect, and duck, like a game of dodgeball. We can't keep playing those games. And what should really concern all of us right now, aside from everything that we're talking about, is the fact that you know who's not here today? Not one banker is here to see what the outcome is. Usually, this whole section is filled with the $3,000 suit crowd. They're not here today. The outcome isn't even in question that they're worried about. That is the business as usual that has got to come to an end. Our city, our residents deserve better options. We should be able to not only fund menu, but as some of my colleagues said, have fun equitable options to help those wards that are still always going to be behind because of gerrymandering or because of lack of investment. But we're not having those conversations. We're begging for morsels, for crumbs, as one of our colleagues likes to say, at a time when we should be baking a whole new set of pies. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. There's one more speaker that wished to speak in front of the chair, just raised his hand. The chair recognizes Alderman Riley.
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. First, I want to acknowledge the excellent remarks made by Alderman Beal, Conway, and Lopez, and I'm not going to repeat those comments, but during debate, it was pretty frustrating to hear some of my colleagues, whom I worked with for many, many years and have a lot of respect for, to go through these ridiculous contortions to justify a yes vote on what we all know is a poorly put-together bond deal that's going to saddle taxpayers with massive debt in the future, because the technical aspects of this bond deal are deficient. We're not having a debate over whether or not there's a role for infrastructure investment. We're not debating the merits of the Aldermanic Menu Program. Every single person in this chamber knows those are very important things. But to see the contortions my colleagues are going through to get you all to vote for an irresponsible deal is maddening. To hear one of my colleagues say it, "If we don't pass this irresponsible bond deal, there will be complete and total Armageddon." Street poles will fall, potholes will proliferate, bridges will collapse, a river will flood, frogs, locusts, the plague. It's total baloney. It's absolute and total baloney. And I could tell you another colleague saying, you know what, even admitting how deficient this is, saying, "You know what, let's get this done today, because infrastructure is important. We'll go back and fix that later, trust us." You know, when the government promises to go back and fix something later, you can call BS on that. That hardly ever happens. So, don't put that in your hat as an assurance. But more importantly here, we have plenty of time to get this right. Even if we took a few more days, we can all come back here and do this properly. It's the mechanics of the deal. It's not even the merits of the projects that are proposed to be funded by it. So, this idea that we're in a real hurry and we've got to get this done today or else is absolute and total baloney. So, look, you know, we all have just a couple of jobs in this chamber. One of them is to protect the Chicago taxpayer, and this body has not been doing a very good job of that as of late. And my colleague, who's not here today, but the chairman of one of our big committees, said, "Well, this is routine, this is how we've always done things." And I've been here a bit longer than him, and as long as some of my other colleagues to say, "Yeah, there's some truth to that." And that's why we're in such a horrendous budget mess today. Routine and standard operating procedure is why we're in the hole we're in today. And you all were elected here to make things better. You were sent here to fix it, to not continue with the routines that have been screwing taxpayers for decades. You got a job here. This is not whether or not you have infrastructure for your wards, this is not whether or not we put our friends in labor to work on these important projects. It's how we do it, and that really, really matters, especially to my colleagues' children, who are two, five, and whatever the other age is, who'll be paying for all this nonsense, for all this irresponsible spending that we don't need to do here today. So, please, colleagues, pump the brakes on this. This isn't the final vote on a bond deal, but let's make it a first important vote on the bond deal, so we can go back and get this thing right. I urge the body to vote no. And before that, though, Mr. President, I invoke Rule 27 and move to postpone this vote until May 21, 2025 City Council meeting. Thank you, Mr. President.
There's a motion, there's a motion on the floor to invoke Rule 27 to postpone this vote until, what date was that? May 22? May 21, and then there was a subsequent motion to lay that motion on the table. But just a second, please. Before we take the vote to lay the motion on the table, Alderman Viegas wishes to participate remotely invoking Rule 59. Alderman Viegas, can you confirm your presence online?
Present, Chairman. Present, Chairman.
He is present. Is there a desire to accept this motion by voice vote? Very well. All those in favor of adding Alderman Viegas to participate remotely per Rule 59 signify by saying aye. Any opposed, say nay. In the opinion of the chair, the ayes have it. So, there's a motion on the floor to delay this vote until May 21. There's a subsequent motion to lay that motion on the table. Madam Clerk, thank you very much for making the technology available for the motion to lay the motion to lay this vote on the table. So, in other words, if you vote yes to lay this motion on the table, you wish not to accept a motion to delay this vote until May, and then you wish to return back to the initial motion for the passage of this item. Alders, please use your e-vote application to record your vote at this time.
The voting is now open. The voting is now open. Please use your e-device. The voting is now open. This vote is for the motion on the table. Correct. Delay on the table. I will now call on those for a voice vote. Alderman Hopkins. Hopkins is a no. I can't move past you, no. I can't move past you. If you're here, I have to take the vote. Alderman Yancey is a yes. Alderwoman Coleman.
Yes.
Coleman is a yes. Alderman O'Shea. O'Shea is a no. Alderwoman Taylor.
Yes.
Taylor is a yes. Alderman Irvin.
Alderman Irvin votes yes.
Irvin is a yes. Alderman Talafaro.
Yes.
Alderman Talafaro is a yes. Alderman Viegas.
No.
Viegas is a no. Alderwoman Haddon.
Yes.
Haddon is a yes. Have all of those voted who wished? Haddon is a yes. Okay, the voting is now closed.
Per state law, there are 25 yeas, 25 nays. Per state law, in the event of a tie, the chair, president of the body, is allowed to cast a vote, and I am an aye. This motion passes. The chair recognizes Chairwoman Dow.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be brief. I want to say three things. One, I- One, I think we all agree that infrastructure is very important in the city. It's crucial, and this bond issuance does just that. It provides infrastructure for our current and future residents, and it's the foundation of what makes this city great. I think the second thing I want to say is that, you know, we have to be able to adapt, and this bond is an example of adaptation. One, it talks about a bond limit up to a certain amount. We may spend less. We may spend much less. Secondly, the bond issuance offers the flexibility necessary to ensure that at any given point we can right-size or mold the repayment schedule so that it benefits our communities at its maximum level. And we can do that while ensuring that not a single cent of this money goes to anything besides infrastructure. I guess the last thing I want to say is, you know, people keep comparing this to a mortgage. We're not mortgaging the future of our children. In fact, we are building the roads that they're going to use, and having them pay their fair share to use these roads like they do today is good public policy. So with that, I would urge the body to vote yes on this bond deal so that we can move our city forward. Thank you.
Question is being called here for the passage of this item, again, by roll-call vote. Does that still stand, Chairwoman Dow? That motion still carries?
Yes, I'm sorry, Mr. President. I move the motion to call this ordinance for a roll-call vote.
Very well. Thank you, Madam Clerk, for providing the technology today. Alders, please use your e-vote application to record your vote at this time.
The voting is now open. The voting is now open. Please use your e-device. The voting is now open. Please raise your hand if you need any help. The voting is now open. Alderman Yancy, not present. Alderwoman Coleman.
Coleman is a yes.
Coleman is a yes. Alderwoman Taylor.
Yes.
Taylor is a yes. Alderman Irvin.
Alderman Irvin votes yes.
Irvin is a yes. Alderman Talafaro.
Yes.
Talafaro is a yes. Alderman Viegas.
No.
Viegas is a no. Alderwoman Haddon.
Yes.
Alderwoman Haddon is a yes. Have all those voted who wished? The voting is now closed.
There are 26 yeas, 23 nays. This motion passes. Alderman Mitchell on a motion to reconsider.
I move to reconsider the vote.
All those in favor of the reconsideration of the vote signify by saying aye. Any opposed, say no. No, the motion fails. For miscellaneous, Alderman Mitchell, anything? Believe it's the...
I'm unfinished.
Just the date and time of the next meeting, is that correct?
Except for the ordinance setting the date and time for the next meeting, I'm not aware of any miscellaneous.
I'm not aware of any...
Believe it's the...
I'm unfinished.
Just the date and time of the next meeting, is that correct?
Except for the ordinance setting the date and time for the next meeting, I'm not aware of any miscellaneous.
Very well, for the date and time for the next meeting, Alderman Mitchell.
I've handed up an ordinance to the clerk setting the date and time for the next...
Very well, thank you much. Madam Clerk, please read the ordinance.
Being ordained by the City Council of Chicago, the next scheduled meeting at the City Council of Chicago shall be held on Wednesday, March 12, 2025, beginning 10:00 a.m. in the Council Chamber on the second floor, City Hall, 121 North Lissaw Street, Chicago, Illinois. This ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after its passage. Gregory Mitchell, Alderman, 7th Ward.
Very well, Alderman Mitchell. Alderman Mitchell.
I move that matters and the ordinance be passed by the first most favorable roll-call vote by the Committee on Rules and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objection, so ordered. On the omnibus, Alderman Mitchell.
I move that matters and honestly passed by the first most favorable roll-call vote by the Committee on Rules and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objection, so ordered. Alderman Mitchell on the motion to adjourn.
There being no further business before the body, I move that we adjourn.
Hearing no objection, so ordered. This meeting is adjourned.
Come on, listen, man.